I open this transitional meeting of the Planning Commission at 6:33 PM. Commissioner Almond?
Here.
Commissioner Coronado? Commissioner Neely?
Here.
Commissioner Radulovich?
Present.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Rothlesberger? Commissioner Santana?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
We do have quorum. And now I'll accept nominations for the election of commission chair. Anyone would, you can nominate yourself.
I nominate Jason Reynolds for chair.
Second.
This is just nomination?
Oh, we can't second it?
Commissioner Reynolds, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, now I'll take a motion in a second.
I move that we elect Jason Reynolds as chair.
And I will second that.
Thumbs up, thumbs down? Seven in favor, the motion carries. Congratulations Chair Reynolds. And now I'll accept nominations for the election of commission vice chair. Nomination only.
I'll go ahead and nominate Sherri Almond for vice chair.
Commissioner Almond, do you accept the nomination?
I gracefully accept the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, now I'll accept a motion in a second.
I'll make that a motion to elect Sherri Almond as vice chair. I will second that motion.
Thumbs up for yes, thumbs down for no. Seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations Vice Chair Almond.
Good evening. I open this regular meeting of the Planning Commission at 6:38 PM. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
Vice Chair Almond?
Here.
Commissioner Neely?
Here.
Commissioner Radulovich?
Present.
Commissioner Reynolds? Sorry, already said that. Commissioner Rothlesberger?
Here.
Commissioner Santana?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Here.
Chair, we have quorum. Oh, Coronado. I missed you, Coronado. Are you here? Okay, gotcha.
All right, we have a quorum. So, thank you, and if you can, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unless there are any last-minute changes to the agenda, looking around, I see no objections to the agenda as printed, so the agenda is approved as presented. Moving on to item four, we do have a set of minutes for approval, certification of the January 27, 2025 meeting minutes. I will accept a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve, based on the clerk's certification, the January 27, 2025 regular meeting minutes of the Littleton Planning Commission.
Was that you?
Motion by Almond, second by Radulovich. And I will activate the voting on the minutes.
For some reason, you're not up there, so how about we just do thumbs up?
All right. Thumbs up on the minutes.
Seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
All right, now is the time on the agenda where we hear items that are not listed on the agenda. If you would like to address the Planning Commission under public comment, please use the sign-in sheet. I will call on folks who have signed up before calling on anyone else in the room. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and please keep those comments civil. And do understand that issues raised during public comment cannot be addressed by the Planning Commission due to restrictions of Colorado Open Meetings law. Do have one person signed up under general public comment, Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here, so a couple of things, which I'll run out of time for. Let's see, for work plan, I'm going to point out that this year you should be working on an update of the comp plan, in fact, probably last year, so that the new revised five-year comp plan would have come out this year. And then you'd be working on the first revision of the ULUC now, because the downtown ULUC was passed five years ago. So you'd be working on the update now, so it would pass next year, so we'd have five years. We are behind in those updates, and we need major revisions. Those were preliminary documents. I mean, there were our first cut at a transportation master plan with the ULUC. They were not integrated. They're not integrated in any way. There is no functional model for either one of those plans, and they are not integrated. You can estimate, or real professional city planners have the tools, to estimate the functional outcomes of code. We never had that in the first passage, and we should have that. You're talking about a work plan, and what I and the city need from you is to insist, as policy setters, that we get an integrated product this time. We get functional models that result from an integrated land use plan with the impacts on transportation and vice versa, and that you tell us whether those are feasible or not. And I'm looking at you because you're the Planning Commission. If anybody owns that duty to the public, it is you. Anyway, the rest of my time, I want to talk about Geneva Village. ULI is great, but it is not appropriate for this decision. The city needs to keep Geneva Village. We have a town square now, it's all publicly owned property. We have a densifying area around it, and we need to keep this effective city park together. Geneva Village also has its own merits. It provides 28 housing units or more for more residents. It functions as a park for this densifying area. It has historic value, and Eugene Sternberg is a primary architect for the foundation of Littleton. This is documented in the 2018 Mid-Century Moderns commercial of Littleton Boulevard. All three future recommendations of that plan include keeping Geneva Village. We need to restore it, we've got the money to do it, it's cheaper than Project Downtown. And my other comment is, this concept of North Gateway is broken. Look at the infill townhouses on Prince and Curtis now. Look at how many homes are there, or cars are on the public right-of-way, because the things that are built don't have enough parking for these people. Now imagine putting three or four times as many residential units, plus you want to put bike lanes on Prince Street? Where are all these folks going to park? The North Gateway is dead on arrival, and so I want you to realize that. And again, ask for functional analyses for these decisions. Thanks.
Thank you. We have no general business items this evening, and no public hearing items. Do we have any comments or reports from our community development director or staff?
Thank you. I just wanted to indicate that staff, a number of our staff members, as well as a few of the commissioners, attended the National American Planning Association Conference in Denver, and yeah, it was a very nice event. You know, lots of good sessions and ideas and topics for takeaway. So, appreciate the opportunity to attend that. Thank you.
City Attorney, City Clerk?
No, no updates.
No report.
All right. Any announcements from members of the Planning Commission?
I would just like to thank the city and council and staff for sending us to the APA Conference. Learned a lot, got a lot of great information, and we'll be working on connecting the dots with our issues in the next year or so, so thank you.
Second.
Yeah, I also just, yeah, I want to chime in. I do, I think it was really value-added to go to that American Planning Association Conference and really hear from professionals, and listen to how some of these strategies are being implemented around the country and the results that they're seeing on things that, you know, we could propose here, or, you know, we could look to take advantage of here. There was a fair amount of discussion, I think, on things that are incredibly relevant to Littleton, so not just, you know, not just talking about, you know, housing and housing growth, but also transportation planning, business-friendly approaches, and, yeah, things like parking management as well, covered in a number of sessions. And I've got some notes, and I hope to be able to share some of those, both with the city staff and fellow commissioners. I don't have that all tidy up in a little report here of things and references, but there were definitely more than a few, and I just want to say thanks again for sponsoring our visit, because it was definitely a good use of time.
Yeah, it's wonderful to be able to take advantage of that resource when it comes to your hometown. All right, and no announcements from me, so I will be adjourning this meeting at 6:47 PM. We'll take a five-minute break so that we can reconvene at the study session table. All right, I will open the study session at 6:52 PM. We have two items to discuss tonight, and the first item is the Planning Commission work plan discussion. For that, I'll turn it over to staff.
All right, thank you very much, Chair Reynolds. Before you this evening is our second conversation about a six-month work plan, so about, well, less than a year ago, so in August, we had a conversation about a number of different topics, and it came up in that study session, the idea of doing a work plan. Subsequently, staff discussed a six-month work plan with the Plan Commission, came up with a number of topics and targeted meetings for some of those topics, and we've carried out that six-month work plan. Now, that plan is complete, and so we're entering the next six-month phase and want to have a follow-up conversation about the next six months. Agenda introduction, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Horizon 2027 Strategic Plan laid out by City Council, a little bit on calendar, and then discussion. So the focus of the next six months, so we do have a number of ULUC updates that we're working on currently, and those will be coming back to Plan Commission here later this spring. So, one of the focus areas would be to continue with those updates. Also, another item that has come out since I worked on this slide is that City Council has had a conversation about the potential for review of the code regarding fuel retail stations, or gas stations, as I like to refer to them. And in that conversation, the City Council had directed staff to come back with a moratorium for six months, so that moratorium has not passed as of yet. There's a chance that that could change, but that's the direction, and it would provide six months with the possibility of an extension for staff to research and develop any potential alternatives to the code, and then, of course, engage with Plan Commission regarding any such ULUC update. Then, we're also working on the Littleton Boulevard subarea plan, so we are finalizing, we're close to finalizing our procurement process, which will go to the City Council for approval, and then, once that is complete, Plan Commission Historic Preservation and City Council will all be engaged in components of that, as well as the broader public engagement efforts that will go into that plan. So that'll be kicking off in the next six months, we anticipate, as well. We also want to focus on the, as I mentioned, the 2027 Strategic Plan goals, and then quasi-judicial items. We have approximately seven of them coming, so we do have a number slated, or potentially slated for future calendar dates. So, we will have a number of items coming before you. One of the reasons for this work plan originally was that there was a bit of a lull in quasi-judicial items coming to Plan Commission, and we see a number coming forward that will take up quite a bit of staff time, as well as commission time here in the next six months. Going towards the 2027 Strategic Plan set forth by Council, you know, we're in 2025 here, so we still have, you know, over a year and a half left of the Strategic Plan. This is a presentation that, a portion of a presentation that was provided last fall to Plan Commission when we first started the original six-month plan, and I wanted to kind of cover the topics that really pertain to Plan Commission and community development, more of the community development. and, and community development, more, more the community development department, but then they oftentimes play a role with Plan Commission. So the kind of yellowish items are, uh, community development items. And then we also have some C manager items that I, I think, uh, also touch on Plan Commission's role. So, uh, twelve, cultivate a favorable, favorable environment for housing development across all income levels. Staff and Plan Commission have worked on that to, uh, a pretty large extent in the last year. Um, and there's, you know, some of that to come in the, uh, future ULUC updates this spring, mostly in regards to, um, state legislative action. Thirteen is another item, develop Littleton Boulevard Economic slash Redevelopment Plan. So we've kind of, that was the terminology used prior to kind of fleshing that out and becoming the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan. So that's definitely a, a key component of, you know, it'll be more than six months, but it'll be kicking off here in the next six months. And then we have twenty-four, twenty-seven, and twenty-nine. Twenty-four, uh, for community development is in regards to environmental stewardship as well as, um, you know, future DEI goals as well. The city's been working on that plan, but then we also have a number of environmental stewardship items, uh, that are also tied to the, uh, state legislation that was passed that we have to address in the ULUC updates that'll be coming before you. Twenty-seven, uh, complete and implement a citywide historic preservation plan and increase the level of service to historic preservation. So, um, funding has not been allocated for a full historic preservation plan at this time. However, um, through some ARPA funding, the city, through historic preservation and our historic preservation planner, have, um, begun a historic survey plan. So talking about, this is kind of a precursor to what a potential historic preservation plan could be. But the historic survey plan will really take a higher level look at those areas of the city that, um, that may merit additional surveying in the future. So it's a, it's a good framework to have. And then twenty-nine, uh, complete a transition to proactive and education-based co-compliance. That's not so much here with Plan Commission, that's a community development goal. I wanted to touch on it and we are, uh, making, uh, adjustments to the way we do, uh, co-compliance and, uh, you know, making a lot of progress there as well. Proposed meeting topics and calendar. This evening, we'll have a, a discussion on Geneva Village ULITAP. I actually, an update on that. The next two meetings, we'll talk about some ULUC, uh, updates. And then the May twenty-sixth, uh, meeting has actually been rescheduled, just so you know, to May twenty-ninth. So just so you're aware, um, oftentimes that ends up being a Wednesday, but there was a conflict on the Wednesday, so that'll be a Thursday, um, due to the Memorial Day holiday. Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
What's the topic for meetings?
Uh, we have a potential quasi-judicial. So that's why it's, um, rescheduled or, or canceled. So, um, there's a strong possibility of a quasi-judicial item there. Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, as I mentioned, we have, you know, approximately seven quasi-judicial hearings, uh, you know, through, that will most likely occur in the next six months. Also looking to kick off Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan. And then we're also, uh, in, you know, talking with CMO's office about the potential for a joint, uh, Plan Commission and City Council meeting to talk a little bit more about, um, kind of a, we've had some, you know, new people on a number of the different commissions or City Council, and so we'd like to just go over, uh, what the ULUC says in regards to process. So that's, uh, the topic, we'll solidify the date for that here in the future. Staff is not proposing necessarily, uh, any other, um, you know, study session topics just due to that level of, of, uh, work that we see on the horizon. The one omission to this, though, is that, uh, you know, gas station moratorium that we anticipate seeing, um, from City Council here in the near future. And with that, I ask if, if there's any discussion.
I just had a question on the ULUC code updates that are for the next couple of meetings. General topics for those updates, sort of like the mandatory conformance with the state legislation or?
Predominantly mandatory conformance with state legislation. I believe we're targeting that discussion for, I could go back to that slide, just so it has the dates for May twelfth. For the twenty-eighth, most likely, we will talk a little bit broader about, um, more signage. We had a conversation about signage. We've got some alterations to those, uh, concepts that we wanted to bring forward to prior to, uh, asking you to make a recommendation on that code.
I want to ask you real quick, on the moratorium on the gas stations, is that, what, what's to happen then within the six-month period that there's moratorium?
Yeah, so the, the six-month period, um, that a moratorium creates is basically a pause. So, uh, a developer would not be able to, uh, submit an application, or the application would just remain on hold during that six months for a new, you know, a new gas station. I would not touch a gas station, or it's not proposed, I should say, because it hasn't passed yet. But the direction that we received from Council was that, uh, they had indicated that, um, it would not, uh, bar any, uh, sort of application that's already in the pipeline. But a new application would be put on hold pending the completion of any potential code update. So, um, during that six-month timeframe, staff would do some research and draft potential, change language, and have that conversation then with, uh, Plan Commission. And then subsequently, you know, with a recommendation subsequently to City Council.
Thank you.
I think the last meeting or one of the last meetings, uh, mentioned the red line drafts for the ULUC would be available, I think, in April, was that still?
So, so many of those have been, um, turned on today. So today, there's, uh, a number of the red lines are available. We did, um, we did have to pull back a little bit on some of the non-legislative items, so just due to timing and staffing. So those will, will roll out a little later. But the items that are, uh, directly affected by the state legislation of last year, uh, if they're not turned on, they're in the process of being turned on here in the next day or two. There's also a, um, uh, public open house scheduled for next Wednesday at six-thirty here in the council chambers to, uh, go over and inform the public and take any questions about those, uh, those red lines. Six-thirty on the, I was gonna say, I think it's the twenty-third, but I wanted to be sure, yes, Wednesday, the twenty-third.
I wanted to first just make a recommendation, um, for the name of the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan, to just call it the Littleton Boulevard Area Plan. I've talked to people and people ask me all the time, what's a sub-area? And it's just kind of extra language there that I'm not sure is helping much. We don't think of there being, I don't think people have a, the public, let's just say, doesn't have an idea of what, if there's a larger area that this is a sub-area to. So just in terms of, uh, before it gets way down the line, just consider renaming it the Littleton Boulevard Area Plan. That was just a suggestion.
No, I appreciate that. It's not uncommon for, uh, when a consultant team comes on board with a, a pretty large planning effort, to kind of brand it and name it. Uh, so I've been affectionately calling it the Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan because that's been our, our.
Uh, and, and the process we're going through.
But that's not to say that that name has to stay.
I, I just think that, um, it's really good to keep stuff as simple as possible in language, you know, not to sound too jargony or technical. You know, this is a neighborhood, it's a corridor, um, we're talking, it could even be called the Littleton Boulevard Plan. But that suggests more of a corridor study, like we're only looking at the area, but we're looking also at the parcels off the corridors and, and around. So it is something of an area plan. So I got that, but I didn't understand what sub-area was, and I couldn't really explain why it was a sub-area, to what. Woodlawn Center would be a sub-area plan, you know? So that was just, just a nomenclature idea while we're still working on it. I, I didn't know, do we, I, 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 I am concerned about the Envision Littleton Comprehensive Plan Update and, uh, that we are getting, you know, one of the things that inspired the, the Envision Littleton process in the beginning is that it had been a long, long time since there had been a strategic planning process. And the, the lesson, I think, I talked to some of the former council members and they were like, we really shouldn't let decades go by between updating these things. So, uh, I do, I wanted to know if, if even if we have a lot of stuff on the calendar, what the, the process was going to be for the next, in other words, there are things we can do to begin to like, set up a comprehensive plan update? Because that's a fairly involved, that's much, I think it could be a fairly involved thing, community-wise, engagement-wise. We probably shouldn't just not do anything on it for a year and then try and roll it out real fast in 2026. Maybe there's ways we on this commission could do some preliminary work, maybe there's, uh, ways that there could be some preliminary staff work on it. But I do think we want to focus on that and I, I, I do like the idea of, of catching up with the TMP, which is even a year further behind, we're now going to be, like, it's just going to be a lot to update those. The longer we go, the worse it gets. And I just would love to know if there's any way staff could, if you think that there's a way to get some motion forward on some pieces of that.
Get an early action item along those lines of being, establishing the success or failure of the goals that were set out in that plan, right? Like, you know, a certain number of housing units or whatever, there's so many goals in there, like, did we meet those?
So evaluation, a little evaluation. Question is, who does that? For Jared, yes.
Yeah, um. But I, I, I agree, we need, something needs to probably start this process. I know I went to a Transportation Mobility Board meeting and one of the things that I found incredibly great was the, uh, transportation staff were asking the board, what do you, what sort of like questions or statements or what do you want from this, uh, consultant we're gonna hire? So they're having sort of direct input into what these consultants are going, are, are gonna be judging the criteria on. And I think that's an absolutely great thing for a board like this. I know the City Council is going to have that because that's the nature of their, of their work, but I think it would be something that would be very, very valuable for, for us as well. It just was a, I thought it was a, a very, very good idea, so.
Yeah, I know that they've begun scoping discussions there, yeah, absolutely.
Jared, is it your sense that, that CD will also be hiring a consultant to manage the ULUC update or the comp plan update?
The comp plan update? Uh, that's a good question, as of, right now, I'm not aware of that effort. City staff does agree that, that we don't want the comprehensive plan to not be updated in, for a long period of time. At the same time, though, we, we are doing, we will be doing a lot of public engagement when it comes to Littleton Boulevard, and we don't want the two to conflict or compete with one another either. I do think the idea of, you know, some preliminary work, some metrics, um, evaluation of the current, uh, goals, I, you know, I, I can definitely see value in that. I've worked other communities, I've, I've done similar items, uh, you know, on an annual or every other year basis to try to see what has been accomplished to ordinarily focus a potential update. So, yeah, I think staff can, can work on, uh, something of that nature to see where we're at in regards to the, the comprehensive plan.
If you find out that it's gonna be a consultant-driven update, that's where Dan's comment really weighs in, then, then maybe we should, that shaping the brief that's given to the consultancy is, is, is a powerful thing, because the consultants you hire are given the brief. And you're talking about sort of having our board give some input to that brief before, but it isn't clear yet that this will be a consultant process, it might be a staff-led process.
Correct, it was not outlined in the 2027 Strategic Plan. Yeah, that plan will be updated here, you know, in the, in the future and it's definitely something that, um, staff is going to recommend, the council strongly consider.
So if it's, that means two more years before we get an update? Is that for the 2027s? Is there just a visioning document to get there and we're gonna take steps to get to, to that prior to 2027, I would hope?
Yeah, I think right now, we do not have, um, you know, direction from councils to pursue that update. And we're, we're also, um, we also don't want to conflict with Littleton Boulevard, but staff absolutely feels that, I, I imagine, you know, City Council may feel the same way, that an update is, is an important task.
So is the Transportation Mobility Master Plan going to be updated before the comp plan? Or are they gonna, are we gonna try and do these things simultaneously so that they are more cohesive?
I think that there's a strong possibility that the Transportation Master Plan, you know.
All right.
So, um, just something that we, uh, touched on, I think, when we were discussing having study sessions, and I think this could possibly tie into updates to the Transportation Master Plan and the, um, Comprehensive Plan and, you know, be one of these kind of opening forays into, uh, you know, what we need to discuss and decide upon, um, would be something akin to a parking management plan. And I, I, I think that, you know, there was probably more than one session at the APA Conference where we were talking about business-friendly approaches and how parking, um, affects that, right? So you can talk about shared parking and making sure that the code allows for that. You can talk about, um, uh, you know, generally, you know, just parking, you know, parking improvement districts. So areas like where we're talking about right on Main Street where that prime parking is or whatever, have that be paid parking, better signage to free parking. Because obviously, what, what we run into, right, is, is when people feel that there's not a lot of parking, like, you know, and I, I think too, the other thing is that there's, there's not much in the way of enforcement happening with parking, and I don't know if that's something that, you know, we can target as a general, uh, a, a plan going forward to say, you know, we need to actually enforce these, you know, I mean, I, I know nobody likes to pay for parking, but if nobody's being, i- if, if the parking time limits aren't being, uh, enforced either, then, then of course, you know, every, every parking spot that's close to the restaurants and to the shops is gonna get filled by the people who work at the shops probably, and that's very frustrating for the people who are there to spend money, right? So I, I think I'd like to, I mean, I'd like to see if we can maybe try to tackle a study session, ideally either with, you know, the, the Transportation Mobility Board or City Council or with each, um, to address key strategies for a, for a citywide or, you know, at least sort of, you know, downtown and Littleton Boulevard parking management plan. Because, again, like, this is, it, it ties to both, it ties to, to current frustrations that people have, and it's gonna tie to the economic redevelopment and the vitality of Littleton Boulevard, um, based on, based on those restrictions and, and what people are allowed to do and how we can make that pleasant for both businesses, consumers, and residents.
Yeah, um, parking is definitely a, a topic for the Littleton Boulevard Plan. That's something that has been scoped out, so we do anticipate, uh, at least for that area, having that discussion and analysis. Yeah, I'd have to look a little closer at Project Downtown to see how much, um, planning went into, you know, parking there. But, um, but yeah, I've, I've worked for communities that have robust parking, uh, enforcement and, you know, paid spaces. So I think there's, um, yes, it's definitely a, a broader conversation. So, um, you know, as I indicated, we're looking at the potential for, uh, you know, you know, as I indicated, we're looking at the potential for, uh, you know, joining city council, uh, planning commission meeting to talk about one item. I can discuss it with, uh, city manager's office to see if another item would fit on that agenda.
Are you looking for additional study session topic?
Yeah, in the next six months, I wasn't looking for too awful many, but I'm always happy to take input.
I just came across and it came up at the conference, I think it came up in prior discussions with councils here or two is, you know, the, the slow adoption of A D Us and that's certainly, you know, something that's on our agenda for the next couple of months. But one of the ideas was that there be some sort of templates or pre-approved plans for A D Us that some cities have actually implemented those. I saw that in the latest E P A magazine. So, you know, I, I think maybe down the road a little bit, but to help people envision price, you know, see if it fits in their budget, see how it fits with their planning. That maybe we could have a study session around, you know, creating a template for that to help people implement those.
And maybe possibly just even go further than that with like duplexes, things of that nature. Cause I know that that was something that the housing board had brought up at one point, which I found to be a pretty good idea. And just at least have discussions on it. So.
Yeah. And that might be an item that if we focused on A D Us kind of a, a trial run and then potential for expansion in the future. But yeah, uh, planning commission has indicated their support for pattern book form of, of document in the past. So. Yeah, um, as I mentioned, I'm more than happy to, you know, take those in and see if we do have some areas that they, that they fit into, um, you know, staff's workload as well. That's a little bit what I'm trying to, to balance this is, um, staff's workload as well as, as a desire for the planning commission to, to do some other topics because it does take you know, some time and energy to, to build a, a, a product of work that I would feel would be, you know, appropriate for a conversation.
Jared, I have a question. On the Littleton Boulevard plan, area plan, is that going to be a consultant driven process?
Yes, it is.
Is, is one of the deliverables from the consultant, a parking study or parking examination of the parking situation there? Is that going to be down to that, that plan?
Yeah. So there's five main pillars that we've worked with are, that are in the request for proposal that have gone out. So those five pillars are land use, uh, housing, economic development, historic preservation, and then, uh, transportation. So, um, we do feel that the parking is a subset of transportation. So yes, what that is.
But not, you haven't, the brief doesn't call for them to do a parking study per se, which is like.
We're, we're hoping that they, or yes.
Potentially would be, okay, yes.
I shouldn't, uh, won't put qualifiers. Yes.
That would be a great start just to have at least one parking study completed with, you know, numbers of public spaces, street spaces, private commercial spaces and just get an assessment of the areas, total capacity to date. Um, great.
Just one thing on envisioned Littleton is that Senate Bill twenty four one seventy four dealing with comprehensive planning will probably factor into what we have to include in envisioned Littleton. Many pages in the bill, forty five pages. So I trust staff is reviewing that one.
Yeah, there, I believe there are two bills that, um, that our comprehensive plan needs to comply with. And so even if it's not a full blown update at this time, I think there will have to be some action. So.
Well, that will conclude study session item number one and transition to item number two. Downtown Littleton's Northern Gateway and Geneva Village. U L I T A P.
We'll call it tap. I'll drive those slides. You don't have to, I don't have to just shoo you away.
That's why I was just going to move down.
Make for the transition.
You had a better access to the future.
I told Julie I'd drive. So. It seems like it would be easier than this mouse that falls asleep sometimes. So, good evening, planning commission members. Kathleen Osher, deputy city manager. And then I'm joined by Julie Latham, housing policy analyst. So Julie has this wonderful job description that also has other duties as assigned. So she's been helping lead the effort. So we're super pleased to come tonight and share that the city has been awarded the opportunity as one of the region's urban land institute technical advisory panels. And we've also received a grant to share in the cost of that with the Denver Regional Council of Government. So all good things. But what we wanted to do tonight is just spend a little time on how we got here. Some of the decisions that have come before, how some of the work that's happened in the city kind of intersect and create this really unique opportunity to have a set of technical experts kind of reflect on the work that we've done and sort of brainstorm about some, some possibilities for the future of Littleton's Northern Gateway. So I want to be clear, some of you may be familiar now from a public engagement standpoint, there's a whole spectrum, right? Like you can start with just informing people all the way up to really allowing the community to be in that driver's seat for, for decisions. So tonight we are just coming to share this update of where we are with the technical advisory panel. We'll also be seeking two members of planning commission to participate as part of that stakeholder process. But I want to be clear about what a tap is and what it isn't. It is a wonderful opportunity for us to brainstorm about future possibilities for the downtown's Northern Gateway. But it is not an opportunity for decisions to be made. It is not the very robust public engagement process that would happen before we would move forward. It is really just an opportunity to, to think creatively with some experts in this area. And also have a set of recommendations that we can say are completely insane. Or we can say, hmm, that's interesting. Maybe we should do a little work around that type of concept or type of effort. So I do want to be also very clear that while we have this stakeholder process, that's going to be a small piece of it. Really the, the bulk of the recommendations are going to come from these experts that are selected as part of the technical advisory panel. What we have done is prepare an application. You obviously have a copy of that in, in your packet and tried to, you know, in a broad brush, share kind of the work that we've done in the Northern Gateway and prepare that, that panel. We'll probably have some additional materials as well. So tonight we'd like to just walk through kind of a walk down memory lane of the things that we've been doing over the, you know, really since the envisioned, it's funny, you're talking about envisioned Littleton. I might have a little experience with that one. Many of you remember that I came to the city in twenty eighteen to help shepherd that process for both a community vision and comprehensive plan and tech and transportation master plan. Those were done together and coordinated. So it was a great opportunity to model on where a lot of cities were seeing success. It's funny, one of our greatest influences was another plan called envisioned Longmont. So it's funny how you really have very few words to pick when you're thinking about the future, right? Vision and. But as part of that process, when we went through the community vision in twenty eighteen, there were really three things that stood out for the community as we were talking to them. And so again, rewind back in time and remember yourselves in twenty eighteen. The three things that came across in that community vision were the significance of downtown, the importance of the river and the Mary Carter Greenway. And the last piece was that light rail connection because it's how it connected us, you know, from a transportation standpoint. So while things have changed a little bit, I think the significance of downtown has always kind of remained as part of that. Now my slides won't work. There we go. So that downtown focus beginning in twenty nineteen as part of the comprehensive plan, obviously both in the work that we did as part of the comprehensive plan, but also the transportation master plan. And then we've seen it come up continuously through the comprehensive economic development plan as well as Horizon twenty twenty seven. Council went through a sort of an Eisenhower sort of all of the priorities as they kind of looked at things that they'd like to accomplish as part of the, the council's work. And Project Downtown was identified as the most important, most urgent effort in that set of priorities. So part of the other thing that was happening, obviously you remember that little pandemic thing? It was a little at all. In twenty twenty, um, we began the, the process of looking at both the land use code then. But we also saw a significant downturn in terms of activity in our downtown because of the requirements, public health, safety requirements. And so, uh, landowners, their businesses, residents really came to the city and said, you know, we, we think there's an opportunity to look at how we organize ourselves in downtown and, and look at some future possibilities. So they formed a steering committee to look at the feasibility of what some of the tools might look like. Um, and so they went through a process of identifying a series of objectives to look at the dynamics of downtown. Really decide if a district could be successful there. We looked at a couple of different models. There a few tools that most of Colorado's downtowns use, either downtown development authorities or business improvement districts. Uh, and then determine if that was both an option, um, pros and cons, really having some of that conversation, particularly among those that either owned property or operated businesses as well as some residents kind of within the downtown district. The district that we studied and, and ultimately was formed was really based on our understanding of the future land use map and zoning in downtown, you know, really that walkable land use that you see that kind of spans from Crocker to the east, across to Santa Fe on the west, up north as far as kind of where that Prince Street kind of comes in. And then down south, all the way to include the Arapahoe Community College. So a downtown development authority as they started to look really became the, the tool that was kind of rising to the top. And it creates a quasi governmental champion for the, the businesses and a central business district. And went through a process with that steering committee to have that conversation. Those businesses decided to tax themselves to be able to collect a set of resources that could be used in downtown. And then also guided a plan of downtown development. And so that really does speak to some of the things that you were chatting about beforehand relative to downtown. So parking called out as one of the major pillars of that plan of development and improved parking experience is one of those five that, that really came across clearly in that work. So the authority itself was formed in twenty twenty two. And really does have those five goals, beautiful and welcoming, well-connected, which really speaks to that, a lot of that transportation infrastructure. Clean and safe, which became a huge effort. I, you know, now the downtown development authority does do power washing on a regular basis, particularly in those months where it's easier to power wash, which is not usually with snow, right? But the improved parking experience as well as that business friendly and vibrant. Obviously, you know, the marketing and promotion side of it, I know they were just nominated for a statewide award for their sparkle and stroll holiday campaign, as was our project downtown was also nominated as part of that awards program. So Project Downtown was greatly influenced by the formation of the D D A. And it became a great partnership as we walked through that concept, concept plan and really looking at all of the elements of mobility, place making, pedestrian safety, streetscape improvements and green infrastructure. And so that, um, plan of course was adopted in November. And it did include a really some understanding of what the vision for Prince Street could look like and what that greater accessibility, particularly for, for bike, bikes and pedestrians and what that future could look like. So it really did start to connect so much of the energy around Main Street and Alamo also to this Northern Gateway. So I think all of these pieces have come together for sort of a perfect moment to really reflect on what the Northern Gateway could be. How there are areas of influence and sort of primary areas. But I think all of this work has come together with the moment that council has made some decisions relative towards Geneva Village. And so I'm going to turn it over to Julie. We're just going to kind of walk through council's steps for Geneva Village as well.
And before we get to that point, I'm just going to overview kind of the history of Geneva Village and the Geneva Lodge, just as a quick overview. As a reminder, you know, a lot of you know this already, the International Geneva Association purchased the land in nineteen twenty seven to create a retreat and care facility for former hospitality employees. The Geneva Lodge was the only home established by the association in the United States. There were other locations overseas. This is the only one from the U S. Then in nineteen sixty four, the Geneva complex of twenty eight apartments designed by Eugene Sternberg was built for the retired married members and their families. The lodge previously had been just for the single men who had run things previously. An overview of the property, the overall property is five parcels. It was purchased by the city in nineteen seventy five as part of the overall land purchase for the new city administration building. Geneva Village was managed by South Metro Housing Options, then the Littleton Housing Authority until two thousand nineteen. The Geneva, Geneva Village Apartments are not historically designated, but they are eligible. The lodge is designated. So council's process on this started in two thousand twenty two when they started considering potential options and alternatives for the site. They and staff conducted a lengthy review of multiple considerations. You can see from everything that's noted on here, there is a lot to balance between the residence, the historic architecture, the rehabilitation needs of the property, the potential for future development, more affordable housing, as well as prudent stewardship of the property. So after careful consideration, uh, council directed staff to chart a course to redevelop the property in support of the city's goals. This was in September of two thousand twenty three. And with that, they outlined some of the principles they wanted to include as part of that process. This slide just reflects the timeline of these discussions as well as council's direction to support the residents that were living there and engaging with the connected to better understand residents living there and their needs, as well as some of the additional conversations that have happened. And then you can see in November of twenty four was when the U L I tap application was submitted. And then Kathleen already touched upon a lot of this, you know, as mentioned, you know, we were selected as a recipient in, in January after we submitted that November application. And just would reiterate that technical advisory panel, panel is comprised of members who volunteer their time. Uh, and they have expertise in the various areas that we would be looking at. Um, and really the whole point is to, you know, people who are going to address difficult real estate and land use challenges. And again, it's just a process to really brainstorm on those potential opportunities and provide some recommendations that could be options to inform next steps for short, medium and long term goals. And this map reflects the core study area, which is delineated into three tiers. Just because some of these parcels are a little different. So grouping them together to take a look at some of the different options. So tier one is noted in blue. Those are the Geneva Village Apartments. Tier two wraps in the rest of the city owned parcels, which is Geneva Lodge, the city center, um, the park and the lake. And then tier three are non-city owned properties, privately owned that are included in the core study area just because they are areas of influence on the site. So wanted to take a look at all of these in combination together. And then these are the next steps. Um, we've done several presentations and as mentioned, we're going to be looking forward to volunteers to participate on those stakeholder interviews, which are May twenty first. What else am I missing? Those are going to be, yep, so continued meetings and outreach and then an overall community presentation on May twenty second, when they finish up their report. We will go fast and furious for two days, yeah, coming up with all their recommendations and ideas.
Yeah. So that technical advisory panel process is a two day process. So the first day they have, uh, will be organizing a series of five stakeholder groups that'll sit with the. sit with the panelists and kind of reflect on a variety of issues. Those will really be organized around our five long-term outcomes that are outlined from Envision Littleton. And then that evening, they'll have a chance to have some conversation with council over dinner and then we'll, they'll come back, roll up their sleeves most of the day on Thursday. And then at the end of Thursday, they'll present back to the community. So it'll be here in this council chambers that they'll have an opportunity to present their findings and recommendations. And then they go back and really formalize that into a full report that we anticipate having in July. So we'd love the, to find the opportunity. I don't know, your work plan looks pretty dense and thick, but hopefully we can find the opportunity to come back in July and kind of share the results of what those recommendations were from, from the TAP. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Real quick, I'm not a hundred percent familiar. Is Geneva Village, is there a Lura? Is there any sort of land, there's no project, nothing like that?
But you mean like a restriction?
Yeah, so land use restriction, tax credit, section eight, nothing like that.
There was a comment somewhere in some of the documentation that talked about moving some of those, there's, there's the five plots and there was something about moving some of those boundary lines so that the lake would be part of the park rather than part of the Geneva Village lot. How much, I guess, I guess, how much flexibility? I'm, I'm a little, I like the idea of the pond becoming part of the park. I think that makes more sense, right? I think there was also something about the floodplain area, like basically downstream that runs through the existing Geneva Village lot. So I think that that would probably also make sense to put into the park rather than have, or, or try to, try to mitigate that in terms of sort of the new apartments. But then I guess one of the question is, is there's this kind of weird little dogleg to the south of Geneva Village. And when you look at that part, it's pretty much an empty lot, like there's no trees or vegetation or anything there. So basically, could that whole, could that whole area for this, you know, new affordable housing basically shift south and then that area where that floodplain is and the park and the lake and that north part of the city offices or whatever all become part of the park parcel?
Yeah, so I think we've, as we've gone through this process, we have found that, you know, we have some administrative clean, cleanup in terms of how those are all plotted or platted, not plotted, platted. So those parcel lines kind of going through the middle of the lake, that's not ideal, right? Like that's, so cleaning up some of that. But then I think what we would probably do is look pretty comprehensively at what the city owns. So, and again, this is an opportunity to kind of think and brainstorm with some experts in this area, like what's the, the best and highest use of, of that land? And so back in the seventies is, my understanding is when the city bought this land, there was a vision of this building and its twin to the east. And so it was bought with that understanding, this building was, I think, constructed to hold about a hundred and twenty employees, I think, in the building. Now we have at least twice that. So I, I think that's kind of an interesting piece of like, that's, that's why we have so much land here. So is there an opportunity to kind of think differently about that? Again, a chance to brainstorm on that because they, the area in that southwest corner, there is, there's some detention and, you know, so there's some issues there that you would have to address with, with different infrastructure than what exists now. So they do this in a, in a financially unrestrained way, right? Which is the beauty of brainstorming, right? All things are possible. So we look forward to kind of how they see that opportunity because the, even thinking along that connection on the east side of Prince Street, like that's not a, a great pedestrian connection when you think about, like, if we were to leave this building and walk over to the forty ninth or Pacino's, right? It's a very narrow walkway. So there, there's some opportunities there to just get some greater connectivity.
Is this going to be, I don't know if the right word is, subject to sort of the right-of-way designation on the Prince like we do with some other, like I've seen with some other projects around here where it's going to actually widen the street out, things of that nature? Is it, is that, is that something that is, that this would be subject to? I don't know the technical details of, of, basically, street width is usually the, the big one. It's like, we're trying to take more street width to sort of match what our, what our comp plan, our transportation plans want these streets to be. Is that going to be something that's, that this will be subject to, that it's going to have donate some, some right-of-way in order to, to facilitate things like, possibly bike lanes, things of that nature, parking, whatever we, whatever, whatever becomes?
Right, our concept, yeah, like our concept for, for Prince is really tied up in, in Project Downtown. And so I think at that concept level, again, not moving into design, the concept was constructed with what they felt was appropriate right of way to be able to include those things, like a greater pedestrian environment and bicycle and still accommodate a lane in each direction. So I don't know that we would change, change that curb to curb.
Okay, so you're not going to take more space into the, into the Geneva Village space in order to do this? That's, that's the crux of my question.
That's typically tied with the application and the review of application rather than the, the TAP. Being that the city owns the land, it's a little bit of a different story, you know, it's, it's easier to build a public improvement, such as sidewalk, et cetera, on, you know, city that, right away, we own land already.
We don't, we don't have to take any land from someone or, the appearance of take, whatever.
Acquire.
Acquire, okay, that's.
You have to buy it, yeah.
Yeah. The appearance of take, that's a strange way to put it. What is the goal of this document in the end? I mean, I know that it, it kind of sounded like it wasn't supposed to be binding. It's most, is this like a visioning document? Is it just mainly like, hey, these are the sort of like five things we could do here? Is that what the goal is for this?
Yeah, so we're constructing all of those stakeholder groups around those five long-term outcomes. So I rattled them off, but I'm sure you all have them memorized, right?
Sure.
But that vibrant community with a rich culture, the sustainable community with natural beauty, robust and resilient economy and.
Governance.
High-quality governance. And then safe, safe and safe community, thanks. I knew I was going to need this. So it's a team effort, nice job, right? So, but those, sort of reflecting on, as we look at those goals, right? Like those are designed to be twenty-year goals through twenty forty. How could we think about downtown's northern gateway to deliver on those things? So it is much, very much, I don't even know if it goes as far as a visioning, like it is an opportunity to just brainstorm some ideas. Obviously, we, you know, that, those additional areas of influence, those pink ones from the map. If I go back.
The triangle there.
Right, so the, the city doesn't own those, right? And, and we are reaching out to those landowners and business owners to hopefully engage in a process of, of saying, hey, what, what are you thinking long-term and, and really kind of understand how that, that fits into it? Obviously, the, when you think about that connected piece, you know, it is a huge part of downtown's history to have the river very much connected to downtown. And this is a major connection across Prince Street over to the Mary Carter and, and the river. So thinking about those types of connection points, but it really is an opportunity to just brainstorm. So I don't even know that it would be a visioning document yet, it's a precursor to all of that. What I really appreciate about council's interest in, in moving this direction is that we get to look and kind of think with some experts about the types of things that we may want to do, both in the short term and the medium term and the long term. So that becomes a really nice piece to, to sort of start that community conversation because the reality is, is the city doesn't own a lot of land. So we want to make sure that the, the good stewardship of that is first and foremost. It's also been an interesting process to work with the residents of Geneva Village and it's been a very gratifying other duties assigned in my own world. So it's really great to see so many of them relocated and, and really thriving in their new homes, so.
Is there anybody left here?
Our last resident will move out very shortly. I believe this month, I haven't gotten an official move date, but that's, that has been the focus, you know? So we have slowed down the process to make sure that we could find a new home for, for everybody that was there. And so council was very patient and allowed us to continue those residential operations through this year, so.
So thank you for the presentation. Do I understand that you're looking, that you're going to have stakeholder groups? Two members of the planning commission will be among those five stakeholder groups? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
This will all happen between now and the end of May?
Yes.
So ULI is going to come in and do all this? So there will be, you want us to pick people tonight?
Ideally, or we can do that, I guess Jared could help us manage a process if you weren't willing to ball and told each other.
The five stakeholder groups roughly coincided the five, sustainable, vibrant, and. The two, how do you assign, are we?
Yeah, so we're, we're, so we're taking volunteers from a number of the commissions and boards and then we're kind of sprinkling everyone through there. So we've come to Historical Preservation Commission, Planning Commission, the Downtown Development Authority, and then also with the Environmental Stewardship Board, the Next Generation Advisory Board, the Altern Culture Board, Transportation Mobility Board, South Metro Housing Options, and asked for two, asked for two volunteers from all of those. And then we're kind of working as a staff to kind of get those numbers right. I mean, you don't want those groups to be too large. And then it's a forty-five minute, it'll be a forty-five minute ask for anyone that volun, told volunteers. And then it'll be, it'll happen probably somewhere between eleven thirty and three P.M. on the twenty first of May. And so we'll share with you which forty-five minute slot and share that application, which of course you've already seen. So that'll be any and all of the background information that you need. And then the, the TAP will pepper you with questions and gain your insights and then that'll help inform them as they go through a series of recommendations.
Yeah, we understand too that people may need to check calendars, et cetera. That Historical Preservation Commission did not decide that night. If we do have people who know upfront that there, have some flexibility on Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. Then that, you know, more than happy to have that conversation. If not, you need to check your calendars, we happy to facilitate a separate process.
More than two people interested or exactly two? Anyone else want to think about it?
I'm interested, but I don't know the time for it for me, so.
Well, hopefully five P.M. on Thursday, the twenty second, is an opportunity to come and hear the recommendations. And if that doesn't work for you, rest assured, that report will come and we'll share that with you and hopefully have an opportunity to come in and chat about it as well with the planning commission.
I think you Thursday, but not the Wednesday.
So, and we're, we're going to open that up as a large community presentation that ULI is prepared to do for us. So it'll be from five to six, just before the Transportation Mobility Board meeting. So we have our two volunteers, they were definitely volunteers. I saw you raise your own hands and not get pointed at.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. So they're going to, it's, it's eleven thirty, between eleven thirty and three, and it'll be for a forty-five minute slot. So we'll let you know which one specifically.
No, I, I'm usually, actually, Wednesdays are pretty, Wednesdays are pretty flexible for me and as long as I know in advance too, it's, it's even easier, so.
Yeah.
Sounds like we may have an alternate just in case.
That's what it sounds like. Ten minutes up the road, forty-five minutes I can break away for, for sure, so.
Great, thanks, Dan. Thank you, Erin, thank you, Patrick. All right.
Things you're seeking from us this evening?
No. I mean, I love that you're talking about Envision Littleton and the comprehensive plan. I know that it may feel like there's this sense of being behind, but I just want to remind you, like, there have been steps, right? And the strategic plan is a major tool and bridge between those comprehensive plans. And so that has been an opportunity for council to really identify some priorities. And, you know, I think if, if you want to take a look at those goals and, and how we've kind of marched through that work, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the, the course that we've set. It is not currently in our twenty twenty-five budget. We're about to go through our work plan exercise. We usually do that in May and June of, of each year. So we'll kind of look and see what's, what's possible in that twenty twenty-six work plan. I know our office, the city manager's office, was heavily involved through Envision Littleton, so I imagine we would at least play a project management role and then rely very heavily on, on staff's technical expertise to get us through those pieces. But there are new requirements with state legislation, so we're, we're definitely thinking through those. If you remember, we didn't even have an Arts and Culture Commission, or now Arts and Culture Board. That was a direct result of the Envision Littleton Comprehensive Plan. And, oof, have they had some major accomplishments just in that short amount of time? So I think there's, there's a lot of work to be done on that front. So I definitely want to make sure that you know, we, we see that opportunity too and are trying to find the, the best path forward for that.
Arts and Culture recently had their joint session with city council and provided an update as well. So if I'm not mistaken, gosh, was that last Tuesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, time. But if you're interested in kind of an update, then that video is posted online as well.
Yeah.
Question, what are the next steps for Project Downtown? It's been adopted now.
It's been adopted. So, you know, there are two paths that you can take when you're doing big infrastructure projects, right? You can pay cash, so I should pass the hat around? Or you can, you know, save up, you can have a savings plan. Or that third path is you could borrow money to accelerate it, right? Like, it's not like really money, right? It's just a different project delivery that you're able to accelerate that. So that's kind of where we are in the process is trying to figure out the best path for funding Project Downtown. So is it one of those three? And council's still kind of working through those next steps. So very much plan adopted, positioned to move directly into design. And so I think it's just a matter of how does council want to pursue the funding for Project Downtown? So there, they had some discussion at their retreat and I know they're looking forward to coming back to kind of digging in a little bit more on that front. We do, we've been in the process of recruiting a new finance director and so we're very close on him. That's a, obviously a huge leadership role if the, the city were to start to explore what debt could be and could look like. And I think council's, based on our study session last week, I think we'll move forward with potentially a valid question to residents about the debt cap that we have in, in our charter and, and whether or not that is, you know, one that has been part of like an older charter or if there's a, a better path because we are governed by state regulations on that front. So there's only a certain amount of, of debt that you can, can do anyway. So I, I think council is interested in having that conversation with the community as well. So I think council is interested in having that conversation with the community as well.
Is the DDA bound by the same limitations? I mean, other business DDAs can do their own financing, right? It's taxing from a finance district.
Yeah.
Would they, is that also being explored, potentially, to have them be the financing mechanism for them? GCPs or their own bonds?
Right, so that would require a vote of the district, so they don't have any debt capacity that they passed as part of their initial. So they tax themselves with three mils of property tax. By virtue of the creation of the Downtown Development Authority, they have tax increment finance that then becomes a funding mechanism. And so, but they did not vote to explore, yeah, for that debt authorization. So that would require a vote of the district if they were to move in that direction, so. And I, and I, yeah, I think it's been very successful for DDAs. And in some cases, the revenues, their budget right now is about three hundred and sixty thousand a year. So harder to, harder to finance infrastructure projects and absorb the debt service as part of that budget. So just, just a reality, yeah. Yeah.
Historic Preservation Group have any, have they generated any statements or opinions about this area? I saw noted there's an option for it to be designated historic, but not there yet.
Right, it's eligible, but has not been designated. And so Historic Preservation Commission has had some conversations about Geneva Village, but have not come back to that. And then they, it's been, I think, two years ago, they had a presentation from a few experts in that Eugene Sternberg realm to really kind of see, and one of the key principles of council, those design principles, because it has a lot to do with how you experience and interact with nature and light and openness. And so that's a, we're hoping with our recruitment of two of their members, as well as Historic Littleton Inc., that we get a lot of that flavor and mix as part of these stakeholder conversations too. Because it's a, that's a big piece of all of the things that we're trying to balance, is the historic preservation piece, as well as housing and economic development and transportation infrastructure. And so it's all of that balancing act. So we'll try and make sure that we have really good representation for that.
The goal is to maintain that, those principles and character, but would be established, we're not saving the buildings, like, literally?
I think that's the direction we have from council right now, is to redevelop the properties. So they had some pretty extensive conversation about, you know, could they be converted to for-sale, for example? And the way that they're constructed would really be very difficult to transition those to for-sale units, like twenty-eight for-sale units. We looked at the cost of renovating them. So they went through a whole series of processes, and that's, that's the direction they've provided to date. And again, this ULI TAP won't be a decision-making process, but they will reflect on, is there some portion of the property that should be maintained or preserved, that would be a better word? All of it should be maintained, whatever we do should be maintained, right? But, and what that, what that would look like in the site? So we expect all of those things to be explored as part of their process. But right now, no decisions, just direction.
This is totally not related, it's related, but it's not part of the conversation. But I did have an opportunity to work with Gene Sternberg way, it's, I mean, many years ago. And he was quite an interesting and creative person. He had a piece of land in Evergreen. So he lived in Evergreen, I worked at Javco. And he called me, and he wanted to discuss either doing a swap with open space or trying to do some kind of housing development, either with that piece, which was way, very difficult to develop, or some kind of swap, you know, so that he, some housing could be developed and do that swap with the open space, so that would be donated. But I didn't really even know who he was when he called. He said, yeah, this is Gene Sternberg, got your name from somebody. But I met with him, and we walked around, looked at his property, and anyway, it was.
It's been, I think that's been a fun part of the exploration for both of us. Like, we've talked with that property, it's near Glendale, it's in Denver, right? But it was another Sternberg property that's been completely, kind of partially redeveloped, partially renovated. So it's, it's been fun to both learn the history and also see some of the possibilities. So we hope that ULI dreams big, so that we can kind of take a look at that and say, what has merit and what doesn't? What's, what would be a fit for Littleton?
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for two volunteers and alternate. So I guess we'll adjourn at eight oh three PM. Thanks, everyone.